Good evening. It is Tuesday, January 18th, 2022, 6:00 PM. Time to call the Garden City Council Meeting to Order. Pastor Bruce Campbell is going to leave in our invocation. I'd ask everyone to remain standing for the invocation. Please stand.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, who come out this afternoon in the most ominous manner that we know how. Father God, thank you for all things, for last night lying down this morning, you allowed us to rise. You brought us out here to take care of your business for the city, Father God. We ask you to look over our first responders, look over our staff, look over Garden City as a whole, Father God, but look over this council, Father. Let them agree to disagree with no malice in their heart, making the best decision for the city and for the reverence in the city. He's blessed, he's blessed, he's blessed, and Jesus Christ.
Amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I'd ask Clerk Cole Roll.
Mayor Bethan.
Here.
Mayor Protem Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Daniel.
Here.
Councilmember Lassiter.
Present.
Councilmember Morris.
Present.
Councilmember Ruiz.
And Councilmember Matice.
Thank you. I have a proclamation to read in reference to School Choice Week. Whereas all the children in the city of Garden City should have access to the highest quality of education possible. And whereas the city of Garden City recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in the city of Garden City to be successful adults. And whereas a quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of the city of Garden City. And whereas the city of Garden City is home to a multitude of excellent education options from which parents can choose for their children. And whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community. And whereas our area has many high-quality teaching professionals who are committed to educating our children. And whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now therefore resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Garden City, Georgia, does hereby recognize January 23rd through January 29th, 2022, as School Choice Week in Garden City. In witness thereof, I have upon set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Garden City to be affixed this 18th day of January, 2022. We always like to support our schools. I have been working with the faith leaders in Garden City. And one of the projects that we have taken on is later this month, we're going to be fixing a number of backpacks for Garden City Elementary. And I think that's a very worthwhile project that we've worked with our students. We were to have a formal presentation, but I don't see anybody. Rhonda, is that correct? They have not shown up?
No, they're not here.
Okay. We'll see if they will possibly come to our neck.
Mr. Mayor, I can see somebody out in the lobby and I'm not sure they know where to come.
Um, we will check. Okay. All right, so we have a number of public hearings tonight. First one is PC 2126, rezoning request. Receive a public comment on request by Chad Zitrower, Kerning Company LLC to rezone 4713 Old Louisville Road, 4711 Old Louisville Road and US Highway 80 from R1 to I1. And Jim, it's my understanding that they have asked this to be pulled?
Yes, I would like it to be continued until the next council meeting.
Okay, so I would ask for a motion to continue it to our next council meeting, which will be February the 7th.
Make a motion for continue once.
Motion made in second. Voting on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. PC 2127 rezoning request. Receive a public comment on request by Chad Zitrower, Kerning Company LLC to rezone 4709 Old Louisville Road from R1 to I1. And they've asked that one to be pulled also, Jim? Yes, sir. Entertained a motion to continue this to February 7th. Motion made in second. Voting on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alcoholic beverage license application, Loves Travel Stop. Receive a public comment on an alcoholic beverage license application made by Andy Elizabeth Gussi to sell wines, beer, and our malt beverages at Loves Travel Stop, number 893, to Sunny Purdue Drive, Garden City. I'm going to open up this public hearing. Is there anyone that would want to come forward and speak in favor of this? Is there anyone we want to come forward and speak opposed? Seeing no movement, I'm going to close this public hearing. We have another one. Alcoholic beverage license manager's application, Loves Travel Stop. Receive a public comment on an alcoholic beverage license manager's application made by Donald Andrew Gertrude III to sell wines, beer, and our malt beverages at Loves Travel Stop, number 893, to Sunny Purdue Drive, Garden City. I'm going to open up this public hearing. Is there anyone who wants to come forward and speak in favor of? Seeing no movement, anyone who want to come and speak opposed? I'll close this public hearing. Approval of city council minutes. Consideration of November 15th, 2021, pre-agenda session minutes and city council minutes, January 3rd, 2022, inaugural council meeting minutes, January 10th, 2022, workshop synopsis and executive session minutes. Entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion made in second. Voting on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. City managers report. Scott?
Yes, thank you. You'll see that there's a very large packet this evening for the year-end reports for the departments. It's been a busy year for all the departments. If you have any specific questions about any of the reports, you're welcome to ask me. But that concludes my updates and announcements at this time.
Think we had a very good year.
Very good year.
Council, do I have any questions?
Oh, yes, sir. I never received the update that I asked you about.
Sir?
The update I asked you about, about the breakdown.
I'm having a hard time hearing.
I never received the update that I asked you about the breakdown.
For the breakdown. The breakdown for the crime stats for the year.
No, for the districts, like how they usually be.
Per district?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll work on that for you.
Okay.
All right, anything else? All right, we have a number of items for consideration. Resolution Chief Judge Agreement, Thomason. I'd ask Clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution by the city council to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement between the city and Billy Thomason, which sets forth the terms of Mr. Thomason's appointment as the chief judge of the Garden City Municipal Court.
Entertained a motion.
Make a motion for approval, second.
Motion made in second. And Scott, these next seven resolutions have to do just strictly with our court. So if you could just address them one time and then we'll go right on through them.
Yes, this is an annual exercise that we go through. It was a change that was made by the chief of police whereas we now renew the contracts on a yearly basis just so that everyone has an opportunity to look at the performance of each judge, make sure they're still a good fit. Of course, they have to be willing to serve. And all of them are willing and some are solely dedicated just to our court. And so this is something that we do every year. And we ask council to consider the contracts. We've already pre-vetted and reviewed the contracts with the potential judges. And so now is the time for you to actually approve those contracts.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions? Have a motion in second. Voting on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution Associate Judge Agreement, Huffman. I'd ask Clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution by the city council to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement between the city and Brian Joseph Huffman Jr., which set forth the terms of Mr. Huffman's appointment as Associate Judge of the Garden City Municipal Court.
Entertained a motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. Voting on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution Judge Crowe Agreement Sanders. Ask Clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution by the city council to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement between the city and Richard Sanders Jr., which set forth the terms of Mr. Sanders' appointment as Judge Protem of the Garden City Municipal Court.
Entertained a motion.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion made in second. Voting on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution Prosecuting Attorney Agreement, Modi Moody. I'd ask Clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution by the city council to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement between the city and Lindy Moody, which sets forth the terms of Mrs. Moody's appointment as the city's prosecuting attorney.
Entertained a motion.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Voting on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution Public Defender Agreement, Harmon. Ask Clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution by the city council to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement between the city and Crystal D. Harmon, which set forth the terms of Ms. Harmon's appointment as the city's public defender on a part-time basis.
Entertained a motion.
Make a motion for approval.
Motion made in second. Voting on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution Judge Protem Appointment, Gerard. Ask Clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution by the mayor and council to appoint James P. Gerard to serve as Judge Protem of the Garden City Municipal Court.
Entertained a motion. Motion made in second. Voting on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution Board of Zoning Appeals Planning Commission Appointments. I'd ask Clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution by the mayor and council to reappoint Billy Jackson, Missy Self, Janisha Perry, Jeff Ashley, to serve on the city's Consolidated Board of Zoning Appeals Planning Commission for a four-year term running from the effective date of this resolution until their respective successors are appointed at council's first regular meeting in January 2026.
Entertained a motion.
Make a motion for approval.
Motion made. Say it. Scott, would you give us an overview on this, please?
Yes, thank you. This goes back to January 4th when a memo was issued regarding the commissioners whose current tenure is up for reappointment. We go to them and ask them if they're still willing to serve. And thankfully, they all are. As you all know, this is a volunteer position. They're not paid anything. They just dedicate their time to making sure that Garden City is looked after as far as developments are here. And so what we're doing this evening is the reappointment of those who are willing to serve.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have to do the Judge Protem for Doug Andrews. The resolution for Doug Andrews to appoint him Judge Protem, we missed that one. Yes. You want me to read the heading?
Thank you for pointing that out to me.
Yeah, I didn't catch it either.
I give her credit. So let's get this out of the way and then we'll go back up. Thank you, Rhonda. So we have a motion in... We have a motion in second. So we're going to vote on this. Voting on the motion on the Board of Zoning Appeals. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That one carries. Okay, let's go back up. Resolution Judge Protem Appointment, Andrews. I'd ask Clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution by the mayor and council to appoint Douglas G. Andrews to serve as Judge Protem of the Garden City Municipal Court.
Entertained a motion.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion made in second. Voting on the motion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Y'all told me y'all wanted to get out early and I just tried to read too fast. Resolution Convention Visitors Bureau Appointments. I'd ask Clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution by the mayor and council to jointly reappoint Pat Gunn and Ed Chapman to serve on the Garden City Area Convention Visitors Bureau Authority from the effective date of this resolution until their respective successors are appointed within 45 days of the first meeting of the mayor and council in January 2024.
Entertained a motion.
Make a motion for approval. Second.
Motion made in second. And Scott, if you'd give us an overview of this, please?
Very similar to the planning commission. We always go to the folks that are up for reappointment, ask them if they're willing to serve. Once again, another volunteer position. The two that we went to, Pat Gunn and Ed Chapman, are already on. Councilman Bruce Campbell has elected to go with Curtis Giraffoff, who is Representative Granger on the CVB, and that's the next resolution.
All right, we have a motion in second. Voting on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And that was the one we did for Bruce Campbell, correct? Okay, I'm getting a little out. Ethics Committee Appointment. I'd ask Clerk to read that by heading only.
Nomination by the mayor and council for appointment to serve on the city's Ethics Committee.
Okay. So we have not had an Ethics Committee in some times, so we're going back and form a committee of three individuals. They will serve for two years. And the way that process works is the mayor has the ability to nominate one individual that's not voted on. And I am nominating Lisa Bowler Hunter to serve on that committee. She is a longtime Garden City resident. In addition to that, she is an attorney. So after that person that I nominated, we will take a general nomination here in a few minutes and we will vote on that individual. That gives us our second person that serves on the Ethics Committee. And then these two people will get together and they will choose a third individual. And the third individual, I think, comes back before us, Jim, and the council votes on that third individual.
Correct.
Okay. So we're all clear with how this process works. So I have Lisa Bowler Hunter. I'm going to open up the floor for anybody that would want to nominate anyone to serve on that committee.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Gwen Hall.
Okay. Any other nominations?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Pastor Eric Mason.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Okay, Jim, I think you said we will vote on them individually. So the first one would be Gwen Hall. All those in favor of Gwen Hall, if you would please raise your hand. Okay. All those in favor of Eric Mason, if you would please raise your hand. Do you have the tally?
It's five to choose those, five for Gwen Hall.
Okay. Any other questions? City Attorney Appointment. I ask Clerk to read that by heading only.
Motion by the mayor and council to appoint James P. Gerard to serve as city attorney.
Entertained a motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. And I would just like to say that Jim has been our attorney for many, many years. He has served the city very well. He's done an outstanding job. He always keeps me out of trouble when I think I have a very bright idea. I'll call him and I'll ask him something and he says, "No, I don't think so, Mr. Mayor. I don't think you should say that." And two or three days later, I'll reflect back on it and I'll say, "Wow, he kept me out of trouble." So thank you for that, Jim. You've always been very responsive to council, to the city manager, to staff. So I just think you've done a very good job. And I think we're very fortunate to have you on our team. Anyone else want to say anything?
Yay, Jim. Thank you.
So we have a motion in second. Voting on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I'm going to ask Natalie and Richard to... I think you owe it to Jim to say what your... state what your opposition is because we had a pre-agenda session and we discussed this. And you're asking not to retain the services of the city attorney. So for me, I think you owe it to him to state why you would be opposed.
And you're entitled to your opinion and I respect that. However, you know, if I make a vote that's against what you believe, I don't feel like I should have to, you know, explain my reasoning. However, Jim, it's nothing against you as a person. I just feel like we just need a younger attorney, you know, a more... at the vibrant attorney. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Jim, I would just like to say, like Richard said, there's nothing personal in regards to this. I just feel like the city of Garden City needs some new leadership in order to move forward. What we've been doing here in Garden City for the past 50 years is the same thing, pretty much. So maybe we need some new blood, some new ideas to come aboard and where we can see some, there's some new progress. That's all. Nothing personal by any means.
Well, he hasn't been the city attorney for 50 years, so I want to make that quite obvious. He's been here a long time, Jim, but not 50 years.
The other thing is, I don't make policy. That's y'all's business to do. I just carry out that policy and make sure it's legal. So I do point out certain areas that the legislature has passed new laws on that would need to be incorporated into our ordinances. But I am not a politician. I don't drive the car or vehicle to where you want to go. That's your job. I'm here to help you carry your visions out.
Last year, Mr. Mayor, when I voted nay, you didn't ask me why.
I can't hear you, please, ma'am.
Last year when I voted nay, you didn't ask me why. So why this year?
You know, that was a mistake on my part. I apologize for not asking you. And I'm that much more recognizing that when we have an item that comes up, anything that comes up, I will always ask everyone if they have anything to add to that. So I didn't ask last time. That was a mistake. And I wanted to make sure that I gave everybody the opportunity to say something.
Okay.
On anything that we vote on, I try to ask, but sometimes I neglect that. So I want to make sure that you were given the opportunity to say something.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, motion passes. Five to two, correct, Rhonda?
Correct.
Okay. President of Council Appointment. I'd ask Clerk to read that by heading only.
Nomination by the mayor and council for appointment of a member of city council as president of the council to serve a two-year term commenced in January 2022 and expiring when a successor is appointed by city council at the first regular council meeting in January 2024.
Thank you. Now, Jim, we will have these nominations put forward and then we'll vote on them one at a time, right?
Right.
Okay. All right, so does anybody want to nominate someone to serve as president of council?
I nominate Marcia Daniels.
I nominate Natalie Morris.
Okay. Any other nominations? All right, then we will vote on Marcia Daniels first. And I'm looking at the city attorney. Give me the head shake.
Yeah.
He did. So all those in favor of Marcia serving as president, raise your hand.
Can I vote on that?
Yeah, you can vote on the second. Okay. Anyone in favor of Natalie Morris for president of council? Okay. You have that, Rhonda?
Yes, five to two vote.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Resolution Paving Assessment Engineering Service. I'd ask Clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution authorizing the city to engage the services of CHA Consulting, Inc. for the provision of engineering services to inspect, evaluate, and rate the paving needs of 163 roadways within the city and to develop and recommend paving or road repair options and authorizing the city manager to execute a work order for such services.
Entertained a motion. Motion made in second. Scott, would you give us an overview, please?
Yes, thank you. This is something that's been discussed for many years and finally able to move forward with it. This is for us to set our priorities as far as paving in the city. So there's really no question about what our priorities are when it comes to paving money, Lamig money, G-dot money. And so we're looking forward to getting these results so that we can then come back to you and let you know the high, medium, and low priorities as far as paving is concerned.
Anyone in council have any comments?
How quickly is this going to take?
I'm thinking that we should have the results by the end of January, maybe the first part of February. And then that will shape our policy for paving moving forward for the rest of the year. If that's what council would like to do.
I think it's a great idea because we're just kind of driving around looking at which road looks bad and which doesn't. And I don't have the expertise and sometimes politics gets involved in the process. So this is something we had wanted to do in the past, but it got scrapped. So I'm glad we're doing this.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments? Have a motion in second. Voting on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2021 Burn Justice Assistant Grant Program Award. I'd ask Clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution of the mayor and council authorizing the application for an acceptance of a grant award from the city of Savannah for the 2021 Burn Justice Assistant Grant Program and authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with the city of Savannah in connection with such acceptance.
Entertained a motion.
Make a motion for approval. Second.
Motion made in second. Scott, do you give us an overview, please?
Yes, thank you. This is an opportunity that normally comes around... City of Savannah is the actual grantee, from what I understand, or the sub-grantee. So they're allowed to just make funds to sub-grantee. The police department uses this grant for various things, for equipment and otherwise. And so we would like to just once again renew this opportunity.
Any comments from council?
How much is the grant?
Do you have a...
10,000, shah, three hundred, fourteen, two something. And we talked about it previously. Some of our doors and the budget we plan on buying gold wraps. It is a device that...
That's your plan.
...can take someone in my mental year situation where they'll pay life of us. So that's our goal and we will...
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion made in second. Voting on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution Tea Splotz Intergovernmental Agreement. I'd ask Clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution to accept an intergovernmental agreement for the use and distribution of proceeds from the 2022 Transportation Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax for capital transportation projects, as proposed by the Chatham County, to identify the city's capital transportation projects to be funded by Tea Splotz to authorize the seeking of approval from the Garden City voters for the city's incurring general obligation debt of up to $18,434,220 to initially fund the cost of such projects.
Entertained a motion.
Make a motion for approval.
Make a motion in second. Scott, this is something that may or may not happen, so...
That is correct. It's... yes, it's had many lives of different shapes. And so we'll see what happens after the agreement is executed. It may end up getting shelved or it may not pass at all.
Okay. Have a motion in second. Any other comments, questions on it? Motion made. Motion in second. Voting on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. FYI 2022 Fee Schedule Update. I'd ask Clerk to read that by heading only.
Consideration by the mayor and city council to approve certain updates to the fiscal year 2022 fee schedule.
Entertained a motion.
Make a motion for approval. Second.
Motion made in second. And we just tweaking our fees?
Just tweaking some fees. Several of them are related to rec. UC came to me and asked me to reduce some of the fees as far as sports registration is concerned, to make sure that we had maximum participation. So we wanted to take care of that.
Okay. Motion made in second. Voting on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alcoholic Beverage License Application, Loves Travel Stop. I'd ask Clerk to read that by heading only.
Consideration for approval by the mayor and council of an alcoholic beverage license made by Amy Elizabeth Gussi to sell wines, beer, and/or malt beverages at Loves Travel Stop, number 893, to Sunny Purdue Drive, Garden City.
Entertained a motion.
Make a motion for approval. Second.
Motion made in second. Chief, they met all of the requirements. Yes, sir. You know, they're anxious to get this because they've been open for a long time. And they will like this so they can get it tomorrow, Scott. Is that pretty much...
We will do...